Elementary school students coming in to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
All right, can we come take a picture with you guys real quick? Sure. Beep da. Suppose. Yep, come with us. Neither did I, look at this.
All right, ready? One, two, three. All right, thank you.
All right, can you guys tell us how you were selected to come today? These are our student council members. I'm Mrs. Guthrie and this is Mrs. Carlson. We're two of the three student council sponsors. And these are seven of our 12 members who were able to attend tonight. So will you tell us your name, Ellen Breitery?
My name is Ari and I'm in grade three.
My name is Anna Lina and I'm in fourth.
My name is Molly and I'm in grade three.
My name is Harvey and I'm in grade three.
My name is Jeff and I'm in grade three.
My name is Amy and I'm in grade three.
My name is Lily and I'm in grade three.
Well, we want to thank you for coming and reading us. You guys did a great job, so will you come around and shake our hands?
You didn't get curling up for a trial?
Yeah, I thought so. I got waiting for you for getting a back out.
Oh, me, yes.
Thank you for having knocked out yourself. You ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Additional certified classified personnel actions for consideration, item E3.
Any discussion or not? Okay, oh, a second first, thank you, Mark. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Do we have any relegations or comments? All right, so we have some recognitions. And we will start with the proclamation of the 2019 American Education Week by the Mayor Dan Fink.
Okay, I'd like to read this proclamation and whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults, children, educators, volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, I, Dan Fink, has the mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim November 11th through the 15th, 2019, as American Education Week in the city of Garden City. And encourage all citizens to join together to give back to their community in any way that is personally meaningful. Sign and seal this fifth day of November, 2019. Dan Fink has the mayor. Present this to you.
Should we get a picture?
I should.
Should we get a picture?
All right, ready? One, two, three. Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. See you.
Thank you, Mark.
You bet. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the recognition of the USC 457 Board of Education by Garden City Educators Association, GCEA, or American Education Week. I like it. You're very brave, I think you were very good today.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to go ahead and take this opportunity to introduce some of the officers for our Executive Council for the Garden City Teachers Educational Association. I'm Gil Perea, I'm the president.
I'm Alexander Olinger, I'm the vice president.
Morgan Allman, secretary.
Ron Wyded, committee chair for negotiations.
And the other two executive officers are fulfilling other responsibilities. Let's say a prayer for one of our members. Her mother is going through surgery tonight. And it seems to be quite serious, so I'm hoping that all is well with her and her mother. And the other is continuing her education via Zoom. So let's go ahead and recognize them as well. Delana Billinger, who is our membership coordinator. And Chris Carr, who is our treasurer. Members of the board, it was in 1919 when the NEA and the American Legion joined forces to speak out for public education. Through both their efforts, resolutions of support for education on a national basis were adopted. With this support across the nation, it was in 1921 when the NEA Representative Assembly and the American Legion held its first observance of American Education Week. Slowly, many other educational entities began proudly sponsoring American Education Week as well. 100 years later, education continues to be celebrated and recognized by students, teachers, administrators, governing entities, and the public as being one of the most important accomplishments for building awareness for public education. A lot has happened and a lot has changed in education. These changes will continue to happen until we have met the educational needs of every student for whom we are given the privilege of teaching. The GCA would like to thank this school board for its continued support and recognition for the importance of its students, its teachers, and all of the support staff and people responsible for providing our children with the opportunities to succeed in society. On behalf of the GCA, we would like to offer you the tokens of our, small tokens of our appreciation. And thank you for your support once again.
Thank you, Morgan.
Can we take a picture of you guys as well? Why not? Let's just take lots of pictures.
Do we get a pen?
Yes.
Swag Santa Claus, swag.
You guys come through the middle.
Where you want us? Are we going to see anything behind me?
That's where we want you, right? We got your back.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay, got it, thank you.
Come through and get your pens. All right, we'll move on to the recognition of our Crystal Apple finalists.
Madam President, I think we have five out of our six Crystal Apple finalists with us tonight. One could not be here because of a personal situation, so if I, as I call your name, if you would please come forward. I warned them that we wouldn't make a good break speeches or anything. I think Thursday's the big night and of course, everybody's nervous in anticipation of that. So Delana Billinger is not able to be here tonight. But David Breger from Richard Walker Elementary. Kelly Butcher from Garden City High School. Mackenzie Johnson from Garden City High School. Paul Lappin from Garden City High School. And Sarah Wise from Kenneth Henderson Middle School. If you guys would come on up and we will probably shake your hands and get some maybe taking a picture.
In the front, front and center. I'm short, I can usually just hire.
All right, we're ready? Come on down, you want to, there you go, perfect. All right, here we go, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for our building presentation from the Garden City High School.
Uh, yes. Got a couple of special guests here to do our building presentation tonight from Garden City High School. Believe it or not, January 3rd will mark 10 years of having ROTC as a part of Garden City High School. So those of you who were on the board around, at that time, 2010, that was the day that we started ROTC at GCHS. And since today's Veterans Day, I thought it'd be a great idea for the two veterans that lead our JROTC program to come and talk to you a little bit about what ROTC is doing at Garden City High School and the community. And they brought a couple of their cadets with them to make the presentation. So I'd like to call Colonel Burr and Master Sergeant Boren up here to give the presentation for ROTC.
I'd like to give you guys an applause, thank you for your
Master Sergeant Boren, Madam President, board, thank you for having us come in tonight. The school has been nothing but gracious to the junior ROTC program. And it's awesome to get here and to run into professionals like Master Sergeant Boren. Between the two of us, we're looking at 54 and a half years of military service. And Master Sergeant Boren, yours was much better than mine. Most of these people can attest to that. But thank you, thank you for your service. That's pretty much what our program is all about. Our mission statement states, we're going to motivate young people to become better citizens. And the best way to see that is through the eyes of our students. I brought with us Cadet Julian Martinez, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Julian Martinez. And our executive officer, which is Cadet Major Angel Rivera. And Angel's going to speak first and he gets to go ahead and address it. Master Sergeant, would you like to say anything?
No, sir.
All right. They did prepare a few slides, so here we go.
Madam President, board, we are representing Garden City High School Junior ROTC program. I am Cadet Major Angel Rivera and this is Cadet Julian, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Julian Martinez. All right, as formerly introduced, that is our senior army instructor, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Burr. And this is Master Sergeant Boren. Master Sergeant Boren has held this program up for a while since the departure of First Sergeant. And I would just like to congratulate him for keeping this program alive since then, so. I would like to tell you what JROTC is about. Our program is about motivating young people and teenagers to be better citizens. As stated in our mission statement, it is to motivate young people to become better citizens. And that is our mission. We do that through our next slide. We do that through teaching kids how to live a healthy life, how to pursue happiness, how to just get involved in the community and how to do better things with their life, how to spend their time being productive. And I would like to transition over to Sergeant Major Julian Martinez.
Hello, board, Madam President, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Martinez. How our, how we impact the community, every year we have something called an SLP, Service Learning Project. Our Service Learning Project could be a wide variety of things. Last year, went to the retirement center to go talk to some of the older folks. Sadly, they say they don't get all the attention sometimes, they get forgotten about. And that was one of our serves to help bring up those folks. It could be sometimes in the previous slide, picking up trash at the tally trail, out of highways, it's anything. We also help out by the parades, parades, our color guard. Our color guard for Veterans Day, they've been busy. They just went to Golden Corral, presented the colors. The day, yesterday, they're at the American Legion. The day before that, they're, they've been all over this place these past couple days, three days straight. Other things at JROTC, our program offers a wide variety of things. Our program offers teams on, on side, so like I said, we have a color guard, which presents the colors. They're nice fancy ones of the group. We got our drill team. Our drill team are flashy ones. They're the ones who throw rifles up in the air, spin them around, you know, all that cool stuff. Don't at each other. Then we have our ragers, you can see in the picture, they're the muddy people. They love to go out, get physical, swim, get muddy, climb on stuff, they're the cool ones. This Saturday, I like to put this out, we have our Military Appreciation Night. And this night, we'll be doing a lot of stuff. We'll be telling the story of taps, telling the story of deck of cards, of sack lunch. We will have a drill team performance. We will have our color guard perform. We have a wide variety of stuff that night. It's from 5:30 to 9:00. We also have a silent auction, which silent auction, all the stuff from silent auction gets donated, was donated to us and all the money goes back to the program. So we figure, figure out what to do with it. We either form more SLPs, whatever we can do with it at that point. And that's the end of our presentation.
Board, do you have any questions? What, what inspired you to join the ROTC?
What inspired me to join ROTC? I grew up in sort of a military family and my grandpas, my grandma and uncles all served 20-plus years. My grandpa, I've looked up to my whole life, he served 22 years in the Navy. And so when I, I was in GLC in middle school and I knew the next one was JROTC. So, and it's something that I've always wanted to do because after I get out, hopefully, like to get into Naval Academy and become a SEAL, so.
All right, Madam President, what inspired me to be part of JROTC? As a little kid growing up, my mother was with this man, he served in the Army. And whenever he would tell us to do something, she's, she would say, oh no, that's too hard on them. They're not doing, they don't deserve to be punished that way. And as a little kid, I'm like, this isn't too bad. And they're like, you can't do the Army, you can't do any of the certain armed forces. And I'm like, um, I can. And so I'm striving to make it up all the way to the Military Academy in West Point. And I want to be a commissioned officer in the Army.
We really appreciate your presentation. We appreciate what you're doing in the community. It's fantastic and we hope that you reach all your goals. Okay, will you guys come through and share your feelings, please? Yes, sorry. Thank you so much. Thanks a lot. Thank you, girl. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. That's perfect, thank you so much, appreciate you being here. Good girl, thank you, sir.
Oh, yes, you might as well. You don't want to put the roll over there.
Guys got all dressed up to take a picture.
You don't want to be left out, right? Good?
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent, consent agenda. Should we have done additional certifying classified personnel action for consideration, item D3, rather than E3? Madam President, I move that we amend the, amend my previous motion for the approval of the agenda, to approve the agenda with additional certifying classified personnel actions for consideration, item D3.
Okay. Okay, we need any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Yeah, Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended with regard to item D3.
Okay, we have a second? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, so we will move on to curriculum reports. And start with the graduation rate report.
Tonight, I'm going to present on the graduation rate numbers from Garden City High School. And Mr. Velasquez will report on his from the Alternative Center. As I've reported to you before, our graduation rate numbers are calculated using a pretty straightforward formula. It's essentially how many students graduated in the spring or summertime versus how many students started four years earlier. The clock starts and runs when they become freshmen. And you add in the students who move in and you take out of the cohort the students that have gone on to another accredited school or graduate early. And with those numbers, as I said, that's a pretty straightforward formula. It's the same for every school across, across the nation. But as you know, black and white doesn't always work in a city especially like Garden City. We've got a lot of factors, both some that work in our favor and some that make it more challenging for our kids and our families and our teachers. You know, several of the factors include a very migratory population. We have a population that is here, is gone, is back, is gone again. Sometimes coming from other nations. Sometimes coming into the high school, we have 16-year-old, 17-year-old students who haven't been to school in 12 years. But they're told, go to school when you get into America. And well, we have to get that student who hasn't been to school in 12 years graduated in four, regardless of where they're at when they come. So that's a challenge. And we attack that challenge. Do our best for the kids. The variety of languages, sometimes we're speaking home languages up to, close to 30 at Garden City High School as far as home language is spoken. That makes it sometimes difficult to communicate with kids and families. Things that do work in our advantage, our layout. Since instituting the freshman academy, we've done great things. And building Garden City High School and, and having the layout for our career tech ed programs and everything else we have. The fact that we have a virtual and alternative setting for students works in our favor as a district. Our diversion programs, our truancy partnerships, and then partnerships that we've already talked about several times with Jobs for Americas Graduates Program, Communities and Schools Program. Each of those programs serves their niche of students at Garden City High School. But as a total, as a whole, they really do help us out. When you start adding up how many schools, how many students are positively impacted by a JAG program or a Communities and Schools Program or other community partnerships. So we have a lot of things going on at the high school that I think work in our favor. Really, every little bit helps, every little bit has a positive impact, I think, with those partnerships on our kids. As I shared last year, we have our graduation rate numbers, but the state has not published theirs. So the end of this graph is incomplete. The, the state of Kansas won't properly officially, especially in subgroups, do their official graduation rate numbers. I remember I made this, I made the same presentation in January last year and they still had not made their declaration of what the state graduation rate for the previous year was. So those numbers are going to lie. Our graduation rate rose just a bit last year. Back up to inching closer to 90% of our students, but still maintaining in the upper 80s. The state of Kansas not only puts together a four-year rate, but also a five-year rate. So we can kind of take a look at those students that don't graduate in four years, but are persisting. That five-year rate isn't used quite often in calculations of, of things for federal programs especially, but they do publish one. And that number is above 90% once you get to the five-year rate.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but on that five-year, is that, they haven't always done that, have they?
They've done it for several years, but they don't really, they don't, I guess it's not highlighted because what really, really counts is your four-year rate. And so they, they still publish it, but it's one that we don't really make a lot of just because when you're talking about federal programs or other things like that, they really like to look at that four-year rate.
If I could squeeze one other question in, I'm sorry. When you talk about the kids come in and the kids, kids come out, on your first slide, the, how do we track the four-year, does that come in on the records and we go from there?
Yeah, when a student transfers in, if they transfer in from the state of Kansas somewhere in an accredited school, their state student ID number automatically puts them into our cohort. Or if they leave Garden City, for instance, and move to Topeka, that state student ID number then transfers them off of our system and into the Topeka. that state student I D number then transfers them off of our system and into the Topeka system. And so they're tracked by that. Now, moving out of state is a little more difficult. Where we will report that a student left the state, but there is no way to really track that student. We had a student, for instance, move to Washington State. And there was, uh, we, we had a hard time, I guess, with tracking, did that student, when they went to Washington State, enroll in school? We, we have to make evidence of that, that we've sent records to a receiving school before that student is then removed from our cohort, so.
And then coming in?
Yes, and coming in.
Did you reference the one that's, coming in as a, maybe equivalent to senior in age?
Yes.
But maybe from another country and got a learning curve?
Yep.
How does that happen? As far as the four-year thing?
They, when they first hit, uh, 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 United States High School, the clock starts. And so, okay, now that, that four years is four years, you know, for everyone. And as I said, sometimes that's, that's, makes those things a little difficult. And that's okay, we're gonna, if a kid's in school, we're gonna educate them. And they just may count against us on the graduation rate. But if we're giving a kid and a family an education, well, we're gonna do them. Uh, I, I want to break down some of the major subgroups that we have as reported to us by, by the state, just for your information. Uh, we, we track each one of these. Every year, we get the month of October to be basically a data correction month, where we look at every single student that the state tells us was in our schools and has left and whether they transferred to an accredited school or not. And so we take a look at these subgroups and this, these pieces of information pretty closely. First, the white subgroup that we have is once again above ninety percent. That's about a hundred, a hundred-ten kids in a graduating class. So, uh, I think last year it may have been about a hundred and ten kids. So each student here is about a percent. Hispanic subgroup, of course, is our largest subgroup. And that was about three hundred or a little more in last year's graduating class. So we're, we're well ahead of the rest of the state there in our largest, largest subgroup, which is what we're happy about. Free, reduced lunch is another important subgroup for us. It's another very large subgroup for us, so we like to keep track of that, um, that subgroup. And once again, we are, we're kind of been up and down the last couple of years in the free and reduced lunch subgroup. Yeah.
Uh, free and reduced lunch, so there's whites and Hispanics, so is this just another tracking form that you're tracking of those?
Yes, yeah, we try to take a look at all the groups and see, is there a group that we're, that we're missing? Is there, is, is there something that's in there that we should pay closer attention to? Perhaps as they start as freshmen to make sure that they have got supports they need to make sure that they can, they can make it out, uh, in four years or in time, or make it out at all? So we try to take a look at each of those. So those are our, our three biggest subgroups, um, that we have. Next steps that we want to take, as I, as I mentioned, trying to identify trends. Trying to see, is there a particular group that we really need to be focusing on and try to, as I, as I mentioned to Tim, try to provide intervention to? Early warning, attendance, academics, uh, making sure, of course, you're, you're not in class. It's a lot harder to learn, a lot harder to graduate. And, uh, trying to track that. Uh, and to try to continue and strengthen our partnerships with organizations like JAG and communities and schools and try to get, uh, try to get those partnerships, as I said, strengthened and involving more people. I know at one time, you know, Dana, you, you mentored a group of young women at the high school. And it may have been five, six, seven girls, but it made a difference for those five, six, or seven girls. Through communities and schools, I believe. Yeah, so trying to get more folks to come in and do that and strengthen those partnerships. As I said, every little bit makes a difference for us as far as this. My pardon, then, I'll take any questions that you've got and I'll pull up Mark's information.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you, when we had those dips, is there, did you, what was our reaction during those times? Do we evaluate, have we evaluated that data and, and noted trends? And then what's the result of that in the past?
Yeah, and well, what we try to do each time is we try to take a look at, you know, look back at some of those kids and try to identify, could we see that, could we see that coming earlier? What did those things have in common when they were all freshmen, perhaps? You know, is, is there something that we see that meets, that, that it shows up as a definite need for that kid or for that group of kids? And what we've come across so far in taking a look at some of those is, uh, trying to find, trying to get some students in those subgroups more into programs like JAG or Communities and Schools. Try to head off some what we see as trends.
All right, it's good. Mr. Felbus is gonna come in.
Good evening. Just like, uh, Mr. Nordby was saying, the, the formula is pretty cut and dry. It is, it is on a four-year clock. And, um, this was, the two thousand nineteen was year one for me in my, in our building. And, um, our graduation rate for that year, um, we rose, rose at a good rate, um, from forty-one point seven to fifty-four point five. At the alternative school, we also last year had our largest graduating class since we were at the J D Adams Building. So, um, we had sixty-nine kids graduate. And, uh, we are currently on pace to have eighty-two to eighty-six graduate this year, assuming they do their part. We're there, we're there, you know, putting it out there for them. But, um, and then we, we focus a lot on the five-year because, um, as we talked about last January, like Mr. Nordby said, we focus a lot on the not yet and the growth mindset mentality. And you'll see, so I included the five-year cohort as well. And really what you're com- comparing is the, 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 the down year. So, two thousand sixteen, four-year, you know, with the fifty-two point six goes right along with that forty-seven point eight. And so our five-year cohort last year jumped significantly as well. You know, the bottom line is a little bit of change in, in dynamic and, um, teachers putting forth great effort and kids doing their part as well. This just shows that same data in a graph form. The four-year cohort in blue, five-year in red. Five-year wasn't as high last year compared to the year before, but, um, the, the, the trend in blue is, is definitely going in the right direction. Same subgroups that Mr. Nordby was talking about, we have here. We have Hispanic, white, and our multiracial. The graduation rate overall is blue. Males that fall into those subgroups is in red and females are orange. Hispanic female, what was, I believe, sixty-five-ish, um, was a high, was, was pretty high for us last year. And then everyone else, um, in, in the subgroups were right around that same graduation rate. Much smaller student population that we're talking about. Uh, our numbers do include under eighteen-year-old virtual students as well, though. So, um, and I, I, I can kind of tell you the breakdown of, of the kids in the alternative school, but I honestly haven't met many of the virtual kids until I hand, until I say their name and, and one of you hand them a diploma, um, in May. So, I don't, I don't have a, a lot of, of specifics on the breakdown of those, but definitely fair to say that, that, um, our, our Hispanic subgroup is, is definitely our largest of, of the three in our building as well. More subgroups continued, free and reduced. We, ours are broken down into free and then reduced. We had separate data for, and then our students with disabilities. Roughly four students with disabilities identified I E Ps in, in the alternative high school. And, um, actually, I think it's three, and two of the three graduated. So that would be the sixty-six point six percent there. We are, our, our free and reduced rate i- in our building is eighty-seven point three percent. So, um, just as they're counted in multiple subgroups, the free and reduced subgroup is the majority of our kids. All the thirteen percent qualify for one of those two subgroups. And then, um, these are our E L L migrant, homeless and our virtual kids. Our virtual school, fifty percent of our under eighteen-year-old kids are graduating within that four-year window, um, through virtual. And what we found last year as well as this year, a lot of those kids are graduating actually early. We, we've, we've had some kids graduate in three, some kids graduate in three and a half. But in the virtual program, it is really self-paced on, on their part. So they, if they, if their goal is to graduate and finish early, um, the virtual program is a, is a big tool.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, sir.
So the, again, of course, the three or the three and a half, you, on a year of graduation, students are counted underneath the four-year rate. Correct, so we have fifty percent of the virtual students graduating. The ones that graduate early, they're still counted as graduating in four years.
Yes, yeah, and, and, and they aren't counted until that four, that fourth year.
Just to back on my heels a little bit about graduation rate in the virtual. And I don't, I didn't see trends. I don't, how long has a virtual academy been going on?
I'm not exactly sure.
Is that a typical, you, you know, that's a typical graduation rate from a virtual academy? Sixty percent?
As far as, as, compared to other virtual programs, I'm, I'm not for certain.
I would, I would guess it's probably high for a virtual program, but I would have to validate that with some information. Virtual programs, um, are not for every student. And there's a lot of students that enter virtual programs and, and lose time. I will tell you, our, our program was created because we had a number of students who were not being successful and they would leave us to go to virtual programs. And so ours was created with the idea of we can be better for those kids. We don't, we don't want them to go to a virtual program as a freshman and be gone for a year and come back and have made no progress and they'll be a year further behind. So we, we, I think, do try to, uh, if kids aren't making progress, we try to, we get them back into a regular school environment. But I can gather some more information from other state virtual schools, but I would bet fifty percent is.
And another, another component of our virtual school that, that benefits our students is we actually have, it's, it's a virtual program, but those kids that need some, some personal interaction, some personal help with a certain subject, we have a, a lab in our building that, that some virtual kids will show up almost daily for, for help on, on their work. And a lot of virtual schools, it's literally, it's truly virtual. And ours is, ours is kind of a blended learning where we have a certified teacher, actually Crystal Apple winner, um, previously. But she, she runs the virtual program and she has a steady, steady dose of kids coming in and getting, getting some one-to-one help. And so, um, based on that, I would, I would venture to guess that, that impacts that success rate more than.
Is the criteria for being in the virtual program, if my kids wanted to do that, they just have to request to be in the virtual program?
Essentially, yeah. Um, Mrs., Mrs. Mormon will, will meet with the parent and the student and, um, and kind of take, you know, learn about why they want to do virtual and what their goals are, what their aspirations are after high school. And, um, and they just, they make a decision. It's, it's a little, I, I've obviously simplified it quite a bit, but, um, but essentially, yes, that's, that's, uh, that's where they start.
Can I just, I'm sorry, comment, just kind of give you some additional background, Dr. Kennedy? I know this is the only one that our judges will even approve for our truancy kids. Because a lot of times, truancy kids are going to come in and be like, oh, I hate the high school. I just want to get out, I'll be so much better if I can do the virtual school. And we saw the problems that we were having with some of the other virtual programs. And, um, the only one that Judge Sanders will allow a truant kid to do is our virtual academy for the reason that you have, well, right now, Ms. Mormon, um, in that capacity. And I know in the past, she's even gone down to track the kids that are down if they haven't logged in for a while, if you can keep track of, um, whether or not they're logged in and working or just logged in and leaving it logged in. So, um, I've always been really impressed with our virtual program, so because of that. And, um, credit to Ms. Mormon, because I know she helps me out a lot in my job, so.
Yeah, she, she, she runs, runs a really good virtual program and she, she makes house visits and phone calls, um, regularly. She's, she's always moving.
Do we, do we have high school kids that leave U S D four-five-seven to other virtual programs?
I'm, I'm sure we do. The state has probably a list of forty to fifty approved virtual programs and a student could enroll in any of those. I don't think we have large numbers of that, but I think we, I would guess we have some Garden City students who participate in other virtual programs.
I was just curious, because I'm trying to wrap my mind around how this would be different than other settings and demographic environments, that kind of thing. Because your, your estimate was that other programs in the state would probably have a higher graduation rate. Is that what I heard you say?
No, I, no, I would estimate that ours is probably the norm or slightly high for ver- for a virtual program.
Okay, thank you, I misunderstood.
And then, um, blueprints for continued gain, um, couple of barriers that we put up there. Some of those virtual kids that are under eighteen, um, if, if they're not attending, if they're not logged in and, and making, making their, their progress, um, they, they drop and, and we, we don't ever really get the chance as an alternative school to meet or interact with those students. And, and we, we see that as slight, as a slight barrier. We're going to continue to keep doing what's best for kids and what we feel is best for kids is to get them a, a high school diploma. And so if it takes us five years to do it, it takes us five years to do it. We, we regularly accept a student who we know mathematically can't finish in four years. But ultimately, we want them to have that high school diploma as step one to whatever they're going on to do. And so, um, each year, we take anywhere from eight to twelve kids that we know mathematically aren't going to help that bottom-line number. But ultimately, again, growth mindset, not yet versus not. And, um, we ultimately want them to walk across the stage and, and earn a diploma. So that's what we, we're, we're willing to take that hit for the end result of them earning a high school diploma in our building. And then parental involvement and student buy-in, um, to change and growth because the alternative setting, the virtual setting, they are significantly different than, than what, than what Garden City High School can provide and offer for our students. And, um, a lot of times, we're, we're working on increasing those relationships with parents and, and community members just to, just to kind of share what we, what we are, what we do and, and how we do it. The opportunities that we have, avid implementation, which we've talked about, our, our staff, the increased rigor and collaboration, um, between community members and e- even just our students, our students are working more together and, and more project-based learning type stuff. Minimizing distractions, um, we implemented what, what are called gondor bags this year. And, and what those are, are bags that, that we ask our kids to put their phones in and then those bags lock. And you need one of the, they, they almost look like, uh, one of those anti-theft devices that, that you see on clothing at stores. But the, but those bags lock and we never, we never take the kid's phone from them. They still have their phone, but they're in these bags that are locked. And, and the kids still get their phones before school, after school, during lunch and during passing periods, which is what the phone policy is for, for the high school setting. But what we're, what we're minimizing is that kid in the middle of class that's going to pull their phone out and send a text, text message, or pull their phone out and check social media. They still have their phone, but without destroying that bag, they're not getting to their phone. And, and we tell the kids, if you're here to graduate, if you're here to earn credits, we're going to help you minimize. And, and as great as cell phones are, that's really what they are. And, and as great as cell phones are, that's really what they are in the educational settings, mo, the majority of the time is, is a distraction to, is to, to, to the kids and, and to their goal. Uh, relationships and rapport i, is growing. Um, we have some staff members that, that went to model schools this past summer. We're emphasizing relationships and communications with kids. Um, we hired a few more staff members that, that are, that are bilingual, and no offense to the staff that I had previously, but we had very few in our building that were, that were bilingual. So if we had a, a, a student concern, or even a student praise, we had to go track somebody down in a different building to share that with a parent. And, um, we have now two or three new staff members that are bilingual, and it is, it has just increased, um, our, our parental communication significantly, um, increased for, for the better. Um, meeting individual needs, we're, we're, we're gaining a little bit more flexibility to address each individual student. What does, what does student A need to graduate? And then, okay, what does student B need to work towards that? And, and we're, we're not, we're not as rigid in our approach, that each kid is, is seen as, as, as an individual need, and we don't throw a blanket across the whole group and try to, try to cover them all. And, and I think that's helping. College and career mindset, very similar to the things that we talked about at our post-secondary presentation last month. Our lunch and learns, our focus on college engagement, college and career readiness. Um, we're hold, we're holding FAFSA days and college application days, and our kids are going out and visiting campuses. Um, and, and just the whole dynamic in general, um, is, is more geared towards, this is step one of a bigger picture. Um, you know, teaching, teaching kids and working with kids for, for the main event, you know, what's next, that this high school is not, is not the main event for them. So that's kind of where we are. This is a banner that our kids see every single day when they leave our building. Uh, we got banners put up every exit that kids leave. We, we, we have these banners up, um, and, and that, that's kind of the direction we're, we're going with things. So the message our kids are hearing, and, and hopefully, you know, fifty-four point five is just, just a jumping-off point. So, that's it for us. Any questions?
So on the bag that they put their phones in, how do they get those unlocked? Do they go to the office?
Each, each, no, each teacher, each teacher has a, has an unlocking device at their desk, and, um, the kids are, the kids are asked to put their phones in, and, and they, they seal them, and it's, it's literally, you just tap it on the magnet, and it pops open, it releases, and, um, very, very little time lost at the beginning and end of the hour. And what it really did was it, it gave our teachers back the control of, of distractions. And, um, some of our teachers, they, they let the kids, okay, when I'm done teaching, we, we can unlock your phones, you can listen to music or whatever while you work, but that, that constant disruption of four or five kids on their phones while you're trying to teach a lesson is what, is what we're hoping to eliminate. And, um, so far, so good. A few bumps in the road, but nothing that we didn't really expect to happen. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Mr. Norby?
Yes.
Did you have some of the, um, breakdown of subgroups that were also presented for the virtual school, like the ELL migrant homeless?
We do, um, the migrant, the homeless, I didn't report anything that wasn't an official subgroup of thirty or more. And so, that in order to be an actual subgroup for state reporting, it has to have thirty or more kids in it, so, uh, but I do have those, if you.
So we don't have thirty or more? We don't have thirty or more?
Not in each graduating class. It has to be thirty or more in that class of, whether they're migrant or whether they're homeless or something like that.
I understand.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question? I know this is really obvious, I'm just going to ask it real quick, but I think when you say that four years is the only thing that matters, uh, from the standpoint of the statistics, uh, national or whatever, I, I kind of get that, but at the same time, we've talked many times locally, that what matters is graduation. And, and so I, I think it's wonderful that there are five-year numbers being kept, because ultimately, somewhere up there, they've got to recognize that that is the goal, not four years. And, and so, uh, I'm, I'm encouraged that the numbers are there and they're tracking them like we have for a couple of years internally. It's, it's just, you, you know how it is, but, but talking nationally, I mean, it's a public resource, and we've got public monies going to educate our youth, and if we can do it in four years, it's cheaper than doing it in five years. I get all that, but it's not cheaper than not getting them through high school ultimately. And so, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I know we all think that, but it's just one of those things, I think we need to keep the message going up the line, that what matters is not necessarily the four years. Thank you. Did, did you have a comment on that?
No, I just, I absolutely, I absolutely agree. Like I said, if a kid's going to show up, we're going to, we're going to educate that kid, we're going to help that family, and we're going to do what we have to do. Unfortunately, it's kind of one of the, the KISA goals and one of the things for our district is the reporting of the four-year rate, and so that's, that's what we're doing. But in the end, that kid comes and enrolls in school, we're going to do our best to, to get that kid what they need.
Four-five-seven has so much to be proud of on this whole thing. I know it goes without saying, I just had to say it, so.
Mark, I might piggyback on that just a little bit to, um, agree completely with what you said. Mr. Felbes, at, at his school, um, not all the kids there, but many of the kids, in order to get there, they have to be at risk of not graduating on time, or they wouldn't be looking at an alternative school. There are a few that look at it for other reasons. But last year, we graduated sixty-nine students there. He takes kids that he knows mathematically cannot meet the four-year criteria. The day they come to his school, he takes kids that he knows will count against his school on graduation rate. But last year, we graduated sixty-nine kids. Many of those kids, maybe forty of them, wouldn't have graduated if, or, and I'm making that number up, it might be forty-five, it might be thirty-five, it might be fifty-five. But a significant number would not have graduated if they didn't have the opportunity to attend at the alternative school. So I know one of the challenges that he's working with his staff on is what are some better ways to really be able to measure and benchmark their progress, their success? Because it's not necessarily a four or even a five-year rate. Some of those kids may take six, but that's okay. The end goal, as we said, the end goal is that you graduate, and now you can open up more opportunities in your life at age twenty instead of age nineteen. So, um, it, it, it is a complicated issue. I mean, we would love for everybody to graduate in four years, but, you know, not everybody has the same opportunities like the kids in my house. So, thanks for your, thanks for your guys' work on that.
Okay, moving on to the KISA, building goals.
And I'm just going to do the introduction here. Um, we've talked many times about the KISA process for the district. Um, what we thought you might like to hear is the KISA process for the buildings. So we have a district plan. Each building has to have a KISA plan for their individual building, and they do that through teamwork and, um, setting goals, just like we do for the, for the district. So we've had a secondary, Brad is here to talk about what they do at Horse Good, and I believe Skyla and Jill are here for, uh, Florence Wilson, so, or Jenny Wilson, I'm sorry. So.
Florence Wilson.
Florence Wilson, I was right the first time, so, okay. So anyway, we have one of each.
Show the noise.
Here's.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah. In a way. Hold it, with your, that's going to go.
We'll probably take that one, a minute to come back on, but you'll have to look at the back screen.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Um, I think you all have the presentation in your packet. I think it was a week and a half ago or so, uh, building principals were asked to go over and present our KISA plan to, uh, the leadership team. And so we came over and did that, and as Linda said earlier, this has been a process that the district and buildings have been going through for a few years now. Um, at Horse Good, this has been a good opportunity for us, that we've had a chance to build a lot of leadership capacities in our staff, uh, through this process. Uh, it's an ongoing, uh, goal-setting, uh, in looking at, looking at our results, trying to achieve, uh, certain goals, and then establishing new ones. And then we also try to mirror our goals with what the district goals are. So honestly, this year, an emphasis in the district is with Avid, and then also in more rigor, uh, activities, rigorous activities involved in the classrooms. At Horse Good, I think our staff is doing a great job with that. Um, so our five goals this year, and it's kind of hard for you to see, and it might be easier on your screen, um, our five goal, our five goals this year, and with each indicator, and then it has kind of who the group members are for those, uh, we have about, almost twenty percent of our staff members are part of our, uh, building leadership team, which make up our KISA, uh, that deal with our KISA goals, and then we have subgroups off each one of those that all staff members are involved in. Uh, the first indicator is kind of looking at the principal's role in building leadership capacities. Um, another goal is the all-teacher use of a variety of instructional modes, whole class, small group, computer-based, individual homework, for example. The third goal that we have chosen is all teachers use multiple methods of contact with parents and families, for example, phone calls, emails, letters. Uh, the fourth goal that we have chosen for this school year is leadership team monitors school-level le, uh, student learning data. And then the last goal we have as a staff is all teachers and teacher teams plan instruction and curriculum guides that includes objectives for social and emotional competency. So the first goal, dealing with administrators, some of the things that we're doing this year at Horse Good is obviously we're developing our site plan for Avid. Uh, at Avid, we were able to get all teachers, all staff trained, um, this September, the two days of training. And with that, we had already rolled out through our KISA, through, through our KISA team, our building leadership team, a, an Avid site plan that dealt with every one of our building in-service days that we had for the year. So when our teachers, before they came back to, um, to work on the first contract a day, they had email to them what each in-service day was going to look like. So they had a plan, they knew where we were going with it, what the direction was. Things have evolved, obviously, as our site team and our building has, um, have, as we've met and we've worked through our goals. Um, but as today was a building in-service day, and another great day for Horse Good, um, I think we've, I've seen two of our probably best in, in-service days that we've had as a building, uh, since my tenure there between APUBR and Horse Good. And staff involvement and the collaboration and the brainstorming that's taken place is only going to help us roll out what we believe is going to be a very effective, um, Avid site team plan for Horse Good in January, when we start that up with our kids. Some of the things that we're doing with our teachers, obviously, Avid puts a focus on the costas, levels of questioning, so we provide, um, our teachers, obviously, they had the two days of training, uh, some of them for the first time, others that have gone to other summer institute trainings had the opportunity to get some, uh, information before that. But we're trying to focus on that, we're looking at the, the three levels of the costas level thinking with them. We provide each content area ideas on how they can help when they build their lesson plans and they, uh, develop activities within their classrooms. For example, I gave you in your packet, an example of things that you can do with art on each level of questioning. Um, we have it for core classes, uh, the one I gave you in your packet would be English. The next goal that we've put a focus on, uh, with our BLT is teachers use a variety of instructional modes. This has been a focus of our, uh, weekly professional learning communities. We provide an engagement opportunity for each one of our, um, PLC groups. We have, uh, a QR code, we put it on the table for them, we expect them to go through that, we expect them to try that, go back to the classroom, work on that, the, um, that PLC group will report back the following week with their team members, and this is a, this is cross-curricular groups of people that meet at this time, and they will report on how they incorporated that engagement strategy into one of their lessons, uh, the previous week. Each one of our PLC groups, uh, shares a Google, uh, Drive that we have their PLC groups with their minutes, uh, they put all their information in there. As the BLT, as the principal of the building, um, I will go back and I will respond to those. This allows me to be a part of every one of those PLC groups, whether I have the opportunity to sit in on one or get a look at it through the, um, shared doc, shared drive that we have. Avid strategy is always, uh, is also a focus, we provide those to our PLC groups. Here's an example of one of the things we did with our groups, so gave an example of how they use Survey Monkey in their classroom. There's a QR code for them, there are suggestions for them as to what they're going to do, and they'll go back into their classroom and try that. Maybe it's when they're working with their content peers, and they're developing their lessons for that. The next indicator was fifty-six oh six, where all teachers use, uh, multiple methods of, uh, contact with families. So trying to get that more, uh, that community, that communication piece out there with our, uh, from the school to our parents. Uh, Skyware training, uh, is provided to all of our staff, we do that, we have kind of a set thing for when we hire new staff, um, to what we provide and what we kind of expect out of the building. Uh, we provide that with our mentors as to what they're expected to do with their new staff and how they train them, and then just provide weekly contact, uh, with our parents. Um, department message, uh, classroom topics, things like that that are coming up. And then we also do a weekly parent, um, uh, what Hawk Happenings is what we call it, and we kind of have a template that changes weekly, um, or the information changes weekly, but the template stays the same. So we're going to celebrate things in there, such as, um, positive referrals to what's going on at Horse Good for the week, to certain things like, in this one that I provided here, it gives you an example of truancy. So we're trying to provide information to parents and how we can inform them and what's, what the Kansas law is regards to truancy and things like that. There's two ex, two different examples of those for you in there. The indicator number one oh five is leadership team monitors, uh, school-level, uh, stu, student learning data. So obviously, we focus within our, uh, content areas and also within the BLT on, on, on Kansas assessment scores. Yes.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's fine.
Just a quick question, on, on the prior slide, you, you send, send same information out on all four of those platforms? Skype?
So, yes, so Skyler goes out to all parents, so that's any parent that has an email, um, address, uh, it goes to them directly through there, but not all parents have that. We also put it out on the Twitter, on their Facebook page, onto the Instagram page, try to hit, which most parents all have those, have that different access. So we'll, we'll blast it all at once to all of those.
All of the platforms?
Yes. So FastBridge, Eliminate Data, um, we provide training with our staff, uh, if there's times that we need to bring in someone like, such as Crystal Simons to come in and work with our teachers, we do that. Um, we focus on, we've, we've got a focus with one of, with our, the BLT group that is in charge of this, is trying to show the importance of getting involved in school. And so we are going back, and we can track up to last year's data, because Skyward, when it rolls over and starts a new year, it eliminates anything that we created in there. So like, if we, for example, we had a group of what we call band, uh, so every Horse Good band student, seventh or eighth grade or jazz band kid, gets categorized into the band list, or robotics list, or, um, football, or whatever it is. And we track each one of those kids, and we're looking at, uh, what their attendance looks like, we look at what their, um, grades look like, and then we, we're trying to, um, get, gather all of the information from last year and put that together to show you exactly what a attendance percentage looks like for kids that are involved in this activity, what's their GPA for that activity. And we're going to have this displayed throughout, or at a, at a part in the building. We're not sure yet where, whether it's our main hallway, or whether it's down maybe, um, around Clifford Hope, or somewhere where we have lots of visitors that go through our building, just so we can, uh, put an emphasis on getting involved in school activities, regardless of what it is, whether it's academic, whether it's athletic, um, and showing how that matters to our kids, that they score better. and showing how that matters to our kids, that they score better. And there's lots of research out there that shows that they do that stuff, but let's show our kids and provide more opportunities for them to get involved in this.
So how long have you been tracking that?
So, so this was a goal this year that we just adopted, so we just started gathering this. And all we can do is go back to the previous year in Skyward, because we lose, we lose every one of our groups. When we create reports, we can only create it within a calendar year. So when July 1 rolls over to the new fiscal year, then we lose last year's data. So we've got to gather that now that we are working through. So once we just completed our fall activities, we've gathered all that information. Now we're getting ready to start our winter activities. Once we start, whether it's, we started cheerleading this year, we started robotics, now we're starting new information on those kids.
So will this change though as well? Like this goal is what we're doing this year, but will it change for next year?
So when we achieve a goal, then we'll move on. This is one that we think is going to be something that we find it will be important for Horace Good to always have. And so that's something that we'll keep probably as a building goal, but it might not be a part of a KISA goal. Because once it's achieved, then we select a new goal. Other things that we, that this group will help with is the elite, so this is putting a focus on our kids. We do it by semester, you can achieve elite status in, it goes with things from your attendance to positive referrals. You can get negatives in there for getting referrals and those kind of things. So we look at citizenship, we look at their academics, and then there's ways to get bonus activities.
What is the mentoring participation?
So mentoring participation deals with, first, are mentoring teachers responsible for each one of these? And in mentoring, are they going to, when there's opportunity for club days, are they getting the bonus? Are they showing up, are they participating, and what's the activities? So on Tuesdays and Thursdays are days that we designate to things that we think are important, that we want to provide of all of our kids. Monday, Wednesday, Friday is academics. Tuesday, Thursdays for our kids is when we do our social-emotional, such as the Medal of Honor, financial literacy, digital citizenship, those kind of things. So if kids are participating in those things, it's really an easy, it's an easy class for a kid to pass, and it's also an easy class for a kid to get the elite points for that. Indicator 5832, all teachers and teams plan instruction with curriculum guide that includes objectives for social-emotional. So kind of talked about on our Tuesday, Thursday focus with our kids. So the Medal of Honor is something that we trained all staff last year. We were able to include Kenneth Henderson with that, their staff is included, has included Medal of Honor into their mentoring time also. Sabers training for our staff, mindful student referrals. Horace Good was able to grow the mindful student program with the Compass Behavior Health Pilot this year. To, we have a second person that comes over from Compass to work with our kids two days a week. And then we look at our HDMS SAT. So through this, we rearranged and reorganized how we do SAT. SAT is important to us because it's, one, a way for us to provide interventions and start working with kids that are showing signs that they need help, whether it's academic or behavior. And so we divided our SAT groups up into two different groups, an academic group and a behavior group. If you're a kid that might be showing some behavior issues in class, it might be disruptive to the teaching and learning environment, you're going to get into the behavior, but you probably have academic needs that fall under that too. But if we can't get a handle on to what's going on with the behavior, then we're not going to fix the academic yet. All of our teachers have-
Go back for a little bit.
Yep.
For those who are watching, can you define what sabers and SAT are?
Okay, so sabers is part of the social-emotional component that we're doing here. So what happens here is our teachers will be able to pick through kids, looking at social competencies that they, they might see as, for example, that they have, they don't get along with peers very well, or maybe they're defensive when asked questions. And then each student will also grade themselves, and then teachers also grade them. And so then with that, then where kids kind of fall depending on their, their social-emotional competencies, then we decide probably whether we need to get this kid into a SAT program. Maybe we need to look at this kid for other reasons, maybe it's a different placement, maybe it's a different teacher. And we can have a better idea that this kid's going to work better with a certain teacher versus somebody else. And then SAT is your student assistance team. And with that, this is how we get kids into special education. So a kid doesn't get to be in the special education without going through the SAT process. This is also ways that we can get kids, we can put them on individual learning plans that deal with, our two focuses is obviously behavior and then the academic, and without maybe being in special education.
On the mindful student referral, you said that Compass comes in to work with kids, is that they work with all the kids?
No, so this, so the mindful program is, could be referred, could be referred by a teacher, could be referred by a counselor, could be referred by a student himself, could be referred by a parent. We've referred kids multiple different ways. Maybe a parent calls in to the counselor, or myself, or my assistant, and talks about that they're having issues at home, or maybe the family's going through a tough time, regardless of what it could be, could be divorce, could be fire in the house, could be somebody sick in the family, and we provide them that additional support. It has been free to families up to this point, and I think there's, I don't know if you've been updated with that, but there's been a change obviously to where it's not free to families. And with that, I think we've lost just a handful of people that it's now going to have to go back through their personal insurance to be able to be a part of that program. But it has been a benefit because, one, counselors, that this burden's fallen mostly on their shoulders. They don't have enough time to hit as many kids as it's hitting. And so this has been a benefit for us to have two therapists coming into the school and providing that opportunity.
That's our pilot program we were talking about.
I figured that's what it was, but it needs two days, and I hadn't heard it called the mindful, so that's why I was asking.
Could I ask one more on that program? One of the wonderful things is that you do have the resources coming into the school to support. I'm just wondering, sometimes those are confidential kind of relationships. And so I'm wondering, in a perfect world, there'd be some kind of coordination on what is discovered or therapy provided, not discovered, that's a long term, but therapy provided with coordination with staff at the school.
And there is, that depends on whether or not the parent signs a release. And most parents sign a release that they allow that. And I think most parents, when they get to this point of wanting to have their child into a program like that and receiving additional support, they're at the point where they need whatever help is out there. And so that's one of the things that we are upfront with parents immediately about, is that we would want you to sign a release. If we find out at any point a kid is working with an outside agency, we ask for them if they would be willing to provide that release. That's again 100% dependent on the parent choosing to do that. But they, they hear from us that it's, this is a team effort, and what's happening at school is obviously something that we can share and provide information with. Things that are confidential obviously are not shared back and is kept with the right audiences, so we can provide the best support for the kid.
Well particularly, and thank you, that eases my mind, on the SAT team. You know, when you get into those conversations, there's a lot of judgment there, and it depends on the expertise of those folks around that team. And so that service, or that service provider is, becomes a part of that team. And I was just curious if there was communication going on, it sounds like there is if there's proper releases. Okay, thank you.
Just as for your sabers, the letters actually stand for social, academic, emotional, behavior, risk, screener. I have to look, I know I was forgetting one, so that's what it stands for.
So, our first period of the day, our kids come and they're, they spend with us in a, what is called mentoring. Every kid gets, it's either a pass/fail class, and it'd be almost impossible to probably not pass the mentoring class. We designate the Monday, Wednesday, Friday for academic support. Maybe a kid misses school because they're ill, they could go get academic help or support from classes if they miss. Make up a quiz, make up a test, finish a lab, whatever, whatever they need to do to receive help. Then Tuesdays, Thursdays are days that we designate to the social-emotional piece, to other things that we find important, to the things that we have to provide training with throughout the school year that are required of us, that we take away from the academic core time. When our, when it fell, it used to always fall under our social studies and science teachers because they saw every kid in those grade levels without a kid going to like a resource class. And so they got kind of dumped on over and over on all the trainings that took place. And so that helped, that didn't help them as they were trying to prepare our kids to get through a curriculum and be ready for the next academic year. So what we do is we provide all of our teachers, it's on their desktop, and all they have to do is click on it. And it, so the example, when I pulled it up here, we were all the way through October 14 for you, to show you. And all a teacher has to do is click on that, and it goes to the calendar day that they're at. In there, they can click on the YouTube link that does our announcements. And so they can show their announcements to their mentoring class. They can go in there, whether it's a Medal of Honor lesson for the day, they can click on that. We've developed NearPod lessons that they can follow through and they can run it through, if there's videos to it. If it's a financial literacy piece that we're doing, if it's a digital citizenship. All those lessons are there for our teachers, so it's out of their hands from having to develop it. Now we have consistency as to what is being taught, what message is being presented to our kids. But teachers still have the flexibility if they want to add to it, if they want to change it. And what we've seen is our teachers have built our NearPod library up with more lessons. And now there's choices as they go through things, because they've taken it to another, to another level by doing that. And then obviously, this last thing that we touched about a little bit here is our SAT process. So with our SAT process, just like our mindful student, we've got QR codes, and we've got links available. But a teacher can just go hit the QR code, and they can, it pulls up, now they can enter in to the kid, what's the reason behind they want to refer a kid to SAT. We take all the kids that come to us from the different schools. We have seven different feeders that feed Horace Good. And with that, all seven do something completely different, which is not an easy thing to do. And what's important to us is that we have kids that leave us, and they're ready to go into Gardena High School, to have the best chance to be successful and to walk across the stage four years from leaving our building. And so we have to be in line and ready to go, so a kid looks, when they enter Gardena High School, and they're put into the right placement. So we know now where we could, what might be the best class for a kid. Whether it's the math class in special education, that they're going to need to be in a full, full year instead of a semester-long of Algebra I. And it could be a full year taught of the math class at a slower pace. So this has been important for us, it's been very good. We provide opportunities for our teachers, again, they've taken this. We capture them through the school day, the SAT teams meet outside of school hours, but then we meet with our teachers during their lunch hours. And we bring food in, whether we buy pizza, we have whatever it is for them. And we have had much better conversations going on with the kids. We have seen big improvements out of our kids because of all the teachers showing up, having input. Well, I'm not having issues with this kid, but this is what I'm doing when I saw that. So this might be helping another teacher that has that same kid, but hasn't figured out how to address the issue that they've been having with that child in their classroom. So that collaboration piece has increased tremendously among teachers, but the benefit of it has been to our kids. And that's it, is there any questions?
I have a question on one of the examples. So for indicator 160, you have the teachers use a variety of instructional modes, and then you have the Survey Monkey example on there. So do you do any kind of evaluation or survey of the different things that are being offered to students?
Yep, so like for example, obviously, Avid is, is where the direction that we're going with our staff and training. And so for example, today, when we, we had teachers at the very, at the conclusion of, or the last 30 minutes, they had time to go back and they had to work individually and create, we gave them a rubric of a WICR tracker. So WICR strategies within Avid, and they had to go back and they had to track what areas have they been hitting. So we're trying to go back and make sure that they're focusing on, am I putting an emphasis in hitting the strategies that fall within our, within our goals that we have. That goes back also to the piece within the PLC group, that they're going to go back and they're required that they collaborate with one another. I tried this in my class, this is what I did. And then they also have to put that, whoever their, the person that records for their PLC group is putting that into that Google document that is shared among everybody, but also looked at by myself, and then looked at by the instructional coach, and then we provide feedback to those groups through that. So there's monitoring that way besides through the traditional ways of walkthroughs and other, whether it's presentations that we have groups do and different things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to go old school, we don't have a PowerPoint for you, we just have some handouts. We were the last group to do our KISA presentation last week, so I don't know if it was the best for last, or they just, you want to see us again this month. You're going to hear some of the same things that Brad talked about with his KISA. It was like, oh wow, this sounds really familiar once he was up here talking. And so I think if you went to each building, you'd probably hear some of the same things. I'm old school, I was back in the accreditation process with QPA, where a very select few people from your building gathered all the data. They knew exactly what the plan said. And then on the day that the visiting team was coming, everybody, you dress up, make sure your kids are behaving, and we'll take care of talking to the team. The people in the building really didn't understand the plan. It was a big black binder, we handed it out to your visiting team. They came in, said, yeah, you guys are doing a great job, or how, why are you making some improvements, or why are your kids not improving? I think those days are gone. This is more of a distributed leadership approach, and I think, once we kind of walk through it, you'll get to see that. And we've been working on that for a number of years. How do we get all of our staff to buy in on accreditation and really moving our building in the right way? So we have our building leadership team, and it's comprised of the two administrators, our two instructional coaches. We have a teacher from every grade level. We have our ESL teacher, we have our counselor, we have our KRR site director, our school psychologist, resource teachers, and we meet once a week for 30 minutes. And then once a month, our KISA teams meet as well. We meet for 30 minutes before school starts. And each of those members report back to a subgroup. So like Ms. Solomon is here, she is our kindergarten representative, so she goes back and she reports back to the kindergarten teachers. She also brings their input back to the BLT meeting, so it's a two-way conversation. Last year, we realized we were leaving a whole group of people out. We weren't getting our information to our classified staff. So this year, we have that portion taken care of with Mrs. Regal, she's taking care of that. She meets with our classified staff and goes over information with them. We have a weekly agenda, and we have our minutes that we report back. We have a secretary who sends those minutes out to everyone in the building. We want everyone to be involved. So this little sheet up here, we filled, we finalized all of our indicators last year. So our BLT this year kind of narrowed down which indicators we would like to work on. And at our back-to-school in-service, we went over each of the new indicators, and everyone in the building signed up for one that really spoke to them. So everybody in the building is now on a KISA committee, and so that's what we have here. We leave these posted in our staff meeting rooms so that they're a focal, that we can stay on track to what we're working for. And then we work on best practices and research to help guide these actions. You can see some sticky notes, just getting some ideas of where we were heading with those indicators. You can see some sticky notes, just getting some ideas of where we were heading with those indicators. I think today was a true testament of where we're going. One of our groups said, hey, this is what we need to do for our KISA goal. Can we present today? And so they're taking ownership into it. And they did a very nice job in presenting CHAMPs and our PBIS. And teachers just stepping up and taking some leadership capacity. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
So on the back where the blue boxes are, our KISACs are listed. These are the indicators that we selected this year. And I'm just going to go through them really briefly. They are very much in process. Everything is currently being put into the IndusStar system. And we still have our groups figuring out what our end picture should look like. So still setting goals. So the first one is number forty-three. And I'll let you guys read through that. One of the things we're doing here is just making sure that. Each person that's on the BLT has someone to report back to. And like Skylar said, the parents were being left out. I meet with them. There's a lot of important things they need to know about. Something like our CHAMPs, our building-wide CHAMPs initiatives. That's a building-wide thing and they need to know what to do and that they need to be trained on it. So number ninety-seven. This one is pretty much collaboration. Team collaboration, being able to work together. The adoption of our new reading series has really lent nicely to this indicator because our teams are working together during PLCs. And really getting materials together, taking ideas from one another. The next one is one sixty-five. And this one has to do with classroom rules and positively teaching them. And that goes back to our CHAMPs. We had CHAMPs training again today and it's something we review regularly, especially when we have new staff. And then sixty-eight twenty-one is social emotional. And right now we have our zones of regulation that we started this year. That also is a building-wide effort. It's something our office staff needs to be aware of when kiddos are sent to the office. A lot of training with teachers and parents as well. I know Brad mentioned Sabres. We also look at Sabres. We have Sabres kindergarten through fourth grade. That teachers rate the kids and then second through fourth, students rate themselves as well. And our counselor has looked at that data and we've put together some social groups. So kiddos who may really have a hard time taking turns. We have some social groups working together to play games and help with some of those skills. And then the last one, thirty-four ten, MTSS. And in talking with Skylar, Florence Wilson has been doing MTSS for years. But when you really look at the research and you look at what best practices are, there's so much more that we can do. So we're still working on that one. Do you guys have any questions? Okay. We will be meeting again tomorrow, our building leadership team. And then our whole staff will be meeting again next Tuesday to analyze some things. So.
You said that everybody did presentation, like all the different buildings. So did all the buildings get to see the other presentations?
No, they didn't. They haven't done that yet. That's usually the next step to the SAT.
Because it's interesting how they're very different.
It's by design, a little bit. Back what Skylar was saying with the old accreditation process. It was pretty formulated. You still get to choose your building goals, but the process itself was pretty standardized. And this, the building really has the independence to choose what's important to them. So they all should look very different from one another in terms of those priorities.
But they're coming up with those. It's pretty fascinating. So that's nice to share this to Kisa.
Lots of ownership and ideas coming out of that. As Brad said, teacher leaders, I think. Yeah, a huge role in that.
One of the things I might piggyback on a little too is Skylar mentioned that how schools, their school improvement plan used to be something that they dealt with. When it was site visit time. And it's great to see where those school improvement plans now are, are much more dynamic and involve much more of the staff. We have made it a priority in all the schools to address work goal one-nine, or one-eight. Avid and the rigor goal kind of go hand in hand for our secondary schools, but for elementary schools. That definition of rigor, we really tied into that research from the, the opportunity myth. And the new teacher project around grade appropriate, grade level assignments, high expectations. Help me here.
Engagement.
Deep engagement and strong instruction. So as you look at, as we looked at, all of the indicators that the schools have picked. There are ties into at some level that those, one of those four concepts. Now, we haven't told them which ones. They have to be, but the principals all know that as Glenda meets with the ones she supervises. He meets, he meets with the ones he supervises and me with Steve and Mark Felbus. That those are going to be some of the conversations we're going to have is explicitly, how does your school improvement plan tie to? The board, what the board has told us is important in the direction that we're moving. So, so there is kind of a method to that madness. Now, we don't want to tell them exactly what it has to look like. But they know that they have to make those connections somehow. And when we do our accreditation process and ultimately our final visit. We should have some great data to show how we are moving all in the same direction. And be able to demonstrate the progress that's been made at, at the various levels and at the various schools.
Two quick comments, I think. Was the old notebooks, was that more geared around No Child Left Behind and some of the requirements there?
Somewhat, and also kind of the QPA, if you remember hearing about quality performance accreditation. It was kind of more in line with that model than what the state's going down.
The other comment is just, you know, you are so good at putting this at our place at the board table and re-meeting. And it's something we've spent a lot of time talking about, about a truly collaborative environment. And I think that just comes out in pieces in what's going on. So I think it's wonderful.
You guys aren't staying? You guys are welcome to stand up. We're kind of seventh inning stretch here. We got a couple more presentations. You've had a lot of information. So I'll try to get through this. So you know time is flying. It's time to talk about calendars again. And we're about to get to that point. I talked to the board numerous times about the calendar committee process that we go through, so I'm not going to be redundant. The information is in your slides to talk about. But I'm just going to point out a few things that we should go through. So if you have any questions about any of these areas, please stop me and I'll dig into some more information. But essentially the makeup of the committee is, is we have roughly twenty-seven participants. Again, Mark talked about collaboration from lots of different groups, classified, certified. Board members participate in that. We have outside community people and then we have different agencies that we work with, like Holden School District, GC3, etc. So twenty-seven participants, twenty-one voting members partake in that process. Committee terms, they start on a committee for three years. It's a staggered schedule so that we have some people coming back that have been through the process. We're not starting fresh every single year. So a member goes off, two stay, and we add a new one and kind of cycle through that thing. What the committee's focus is, really the goal is to create the best calendar for kids that we possibly can. That follow to the provisions of the negotiated agreement. The highlightous areas are a few. We have to present two calendars that can be voted on. Our number of hours required by the state, eleven hundred and eighty-three. Total number of in-service workdays. There's some definitions in our contract about that. Parent-teacher conferences, length of duty day. Those are all considerations. As again, we get back to the goal of creating the best possible calendar for kids. Other considerations I'm not going to get into, but those are the things that we try to get from staff surveys, parent surveys, etc. And then it comes down to something we started a little more formalized process last year. Was the board gave a charge to the committee, essentially setting the direction for what the board was looking at in terms of calendar. And so I give you, I've given you an example of that, what we have for the nineteen-twenty school year. I won't go through those, but I also provided a draft that you can start having discussions on for the twenty-twenty-one calendar. The only difference is that we removed, we talked about Avid being a goal of the board last year. And setting a two-day in-service day for that back-to-back in-service in order to have the training that Brad and Mark and Steve have all talked about. And I've removed that because we've done the training to get everybody trained this year. For building-wide, moving forward building-wide Avid. And we won't need to have another one of those next year. We still have to have in place what we're going to do with new staff and making that more systemic. But we won't need the back-to-back days necessarily. We still will talk about that through the calendar committee, get feedback from people. Did you like having the two days? It was a little bit unique. Our in-service days typically are at the very beginning of the year. And this was roughly a month into the school year. Sometimes that's good. It gives people a chance to get into the classrooms, kind of find out, you know, things that they want to know, need to know. And then have the training then. And then if we have some topics that came up that really lend themselves, like the curriculum stuff or things like that. We could still develop that through the calendar committee process, but not necessarily something that we have on our agendas right now. So charging committee, we want to open up discussions around these areas. Maintaining the current number of contact days for students. That's right now set at one-hundred-and-seventy-four and a half. Maintain a monthly collaboration component in the calendar. Consider the addition of breaks and including federal holidays. We're getting to celebrate that today. This is a change that we've added from years past to work in Veterans Day. We did have an in-service day this morning for veteran, for veteran staff. For some of our experienced teachers and then they were off this afternoon. So that's, that's a break that we've not been able to build in the past. And that was based on feedback from those surveys. And then lastly, our goal will be to present a calendar to you no later than March second. So I'll open it up to the board, have some discussions in terms of this. Where I can take some notes, get some feedback. You're certainly welcome to approve this tonight, but realistically probably moving it to the next board meeting.
I had some feedback about, or I personally have feedback about. The reduction of the calendar year from what we currently require to somewhere closer to what the state mandates. Do you think that if we did that, it would affect teacher recruitment retention?
I don't know that I have any evidence to show that it would help either way.
Was that a question, not specifically that question, but on perhaps your teacher survey or your staff survey on. Starting later in August or shortening the year, was that, was that on when to do?
I think we gave ranges of when to do that.
But it didn't, it didn't decrease the contact days?
Well, based on the charge of committee on the board last year that we took, that was, we were to maintain that one-seventy-four and a half. So, so we have to, again, it's kind of a big jigsaw puzzle, but we gave ranges of when we, when we wanted to start. That goes out to the staff and then we have to try as a committee to balance that. So.
Well, and I get, sorry to interrupt because I feel like I maybe stated wrong. I was trying to clarify or maybe help with his question. Because I don't think that's been specifically asked on a survey. It's been within the guidelines of sticking with those contact days. So perhaps we don't know at this point if it.
No, I would, I would highlight the fact that I've only had contact with a very, very tiny sample of teachers. Who felt that a reduction in their work year would be appropriate, especially given their pay range. And I'm not representing that as a representative of all the teachers. Nor am I representing that as my own personal opinion.
Sure.
I'm asking a quite simple question. Would it affect teacher recruitment retention in your area?
And honestly, I wouldn't have any evidence. One-hundred-and-seventy-four and a half days is a very standard in this district for a long time. So to have, to have a comparison, I wouldn't be able to. I will just bring back, you know, the goal of committee highlighted in purple, best calendar for students. You know, so we want to consider teachers and that as well, but what's best for our kids. And that really is the underlying norm of that calendar committee in doing that.
Well, my response at the time was, although I'm not an education expert. It's my understanding that a shortened. A shortened period where latency in the summer is beneficial to them. And it's clear that the longer the summer is, economically, the more that they lose.
Correct.
Am I misled or am I wrong about that?
Now, you can, I mean, you can spend time. So we talked a little bit about last year, the summer slide is what they talked about like that. The amount of, the amount of learning that kids don't retain through the summer months. And a hundred percent of the students will lose some academic learning through the summer. One hundred percent of kids will. But that number increases when students are from disadvantaged homes. Those at-risk factors that the high school and, and alternative school talked about, Brad's talked about. All of our schools in Garden City have. I think our most affluent school is like fifty-five percent for introduced lunch. So, so that's, that's a factor. And the amount of academics that students lose increases with those, some of those at-risk factors.
You have a comment too?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we need to keep kind of in mind too what the calendar committee's role is. And, and it's probably confused a little bit with the language about the alternative calendar. But the calendar committee has a function to, to create two calendars that meet all the requirements of the negotiating agreement. They have to do that. And present those two calendars to the staff to, to vote on, to teachers to vote on. And then by definition, that, that calendar is the one that is ultimately make it recommended to the board. Most times it's recommended to the board. The committee then can pursue an alternative calendar that doesn't necessarily have to follow the requirements in the negotiated agreement. And I think when that, when, and then that calendar has to go to a vote again against the calendar that got selected the first time. And ultimately the, the winning calendar would be what would get recommended. I think when that alternative language was contemplated and added to the negotiated agreement. I think the idea was still basically working within our current. Set of resources, our current timeframes. But maybe able to, to use some of that time within slightly differently. That maybe the negotiated, negotiated agreement would, would not allow. There was, at faculty meetings in the last week. There's a rumor going around that the district is pushing year-round school.
I heard that.
And.
Not the district, the board.
The board, yeah, the board is pushing year-round school. And so I'm not exactly sure where that rumor came from. But my answer to that has been, I think if the board wanted to move in that direction. I think there would be a great amount of conversation in the community before any decisions were made. I don't think that's something that, although you have, certainly have the legal authority to do that tonight. I don't think our board would behave that way. And I, I think our board would see the value in, in having that conversation. So I think maybe there's, there's, it's become a little confusing about really what that, what the calendar committee. The inference was that will the calendar committee make that decision? And, and the board will move that direction and will, will have year-round school. Well, I would say just like that is something that would need much discussion. It would most likely involve negotiations. I would say the same thing would probably be true if we wanted to make a substantial change to the number of student contact days. That that's a process that probably shouldn't be defined by the calendar committee. That's probably a process that should involve conversation and would ultimately go through negotiations. And, and there were, certainly the teachers group would want to have a voice in that conversation too. So I don't know if that helps bring some clarity to any of this, but sitting here listening as I'm thinking about. Because it came up at both meetings last week. And it was, apparently it's out there. That rumor is out there. So.
And I think, and I'm not necessarily pushing for less contact days, but I think there's some confusion about if that was the case when that. but I think there's some confusion about if that was the case, when that could be brought up. Because that's not necessarily the responsibility of the calendar committee, but I mean, the calendar's approved at this time, the negotiations is approved at this time. So, when would that fall in play?
Well...
When would those conversations start if that was something that was wanting to be discussed?
Sure, so I think it could be brought up at the board level if the board felt like a change needed to happen there. That could be a topic that the board discusses, but ultimately would have to be negotiated. That could be something that the board could take to negotiations, or that could be something that the teachers group could, could bring to negotiations.
Why, why would we do that, or how would we do that if we don't have any information, or Dr. Hank just brought up?
And I get, and my point's not even why or what we do that, but the calendar's approved before necessarily the negotiation comes around. So, do you worry about that before the calendar's approved, or do you just worry about that before negotiation? That's, that's just questions I have to ask, right, to me, that if there was a change like that, when would that be done?
Right, well, the best I can probably do is kind of refer back to when we added some days to our calendar, probably 15 years ago now, I'm guessing, maybe not quite that long, maybe 12 years ago. It started out in negotiations, and it was something that the board had an interest in. It was put on our letter, it was noticed, and then it went through negotiations. And the add days, I think if I remember right, it did take us a couple of years, maybe three, or you were never allowed those. And so, to work the mechanics out, and at that time, we paid teachers, we added three days if I remember correctly. Anybody remember? I'm getting too old.
It wasn't this board that did it, you know, it was not on this board, it was here when that happened.
So, I think we added three days, two student contact days and a professional development day if I remember correctly. But at that time, we basically added the daily rate of pay to each cell in the salary schedule to pay for those days. When we, when we added those, added that time, that was something that was important to the teachers, and it made sense, and so. But I think my sense is that would be, it would need to go through the negotiation process. And it may be that we need a, a group that includes some, some teachers and some administrators and potentially some parents to study, to study if there was a change that was going to be recommended. So, I, I just, I, I think we, we might be asking the calendar committee to do things that maybe we're not envision when we define the calendar committee. I just want to be careful about that.
Mark, I've got a step on the question I wish to...
No, my, where I was going to, and you didn't, but where I was going to was just the concept of what's best for kids. And I certainly, I certainly think we focused heavily on that. One of the things that we finally challenged, although I think we're doing innovative things to respond to it, is getting teachers in the classroom, filling all of our positions. And so, back to that question of sort of looking at it from every angle, it comes up, that question as well as are the additional days a concern or imperative in filling all of our teacher positions? And that's, it's not as big a concern in my mind as contact days with our students, but still, it factors in there as a question.
I think, I'm, I think one way to ask that though is when you're going to the recruitment, do they ask you, how many days am I going to be working?
No, ma'am.
I mean...
I mean, we talk about it with, we provide every potential candidate with our school calendar, and we go through that process, along with benefits and salary scales and those kinds of things. But I have not received feedback that that's a deterrent or something that attracts people one way or another.
Exit surveys being those sorts of things. I think we do have some examples. I think we've had districts or teachers who have left us for some of the smaller districts around us that have shorter calendars. We've got a district nearby that does a four-day week, and I think we, we have lost some teachers to that. We've got a district around here that does maybe 155 days in their calendar. I don't know if we've lost anybody to them.
One in my six or seven years that I know about.
You know, so I, I mean, I, I'm sure that if we ask teachers, would you rather work 170 days or 175, they would say 170. That's, but...
Let's start trying to get that one program wrapped up.
But, but it, but I think there's a balance, there's advantages that our district provides that those districts don't provide. And then I, again, I think the balance of this is we really have to make a major factor in this decision of what's best for our students. You know, it's, it's, it's not going to be probably a, a, clear on every one of those factors. It's going to take a, looking at a combination of those factors.
One of the things that came up at the faculty meeting last week as well was that conferences for the lower grades should be different from the principal's. And that is something that I would mind having a discussion, is that the bigger question to me is, are there other things like that that teachers have commented on that we are not aware of yet? So, I happened to get a faculty meeting, it came up, and I think that that's something that we can, we can and should talk about, whether or not that's something that we want to look at or consider. But then that leads me to, are there other things that have, because obviously we don't all go to every faculty meeting, so.
Sure.
Not that, have there been other things that teachers have brought up regarding the calendar that the board should be aware of?
Yeah, if they've come up through the, through the faculty meeting process, you guys get those notes, they usually come out a few weeks after. I don't think there's been anything else at the, well, Amanda's, at the KH, have you got the KH notes yet?
I don't have any notes from faculty meetings yet. They get sent out all at once, right?
No, they come out, so you know. The KH, there, there, I think it was kind of brought up, the number of days in the calendar was a question.
It would be a year ago.
But the other thing is, that would be something through the calendar survey. And you, I think you all do see a copy of the survey results that the calendar committee gets back. That certainly is...
That question's not on there.
No, but there's an opportunity, I think, on that survey for, for teachers to give feedback and comments. And so, like the conference thing, that, that would really be an appropriate conversation to have with the calendar committee.
What's the, ask what was said, what's the comments, and what were they suggesting, or...
So, I think they were saying that, is it earlier or later, they want to have their conference here?
The, the, the spring conferences we do at the end of February, predominantly because high school teachers want to do those early, so if the kids are struggling, there's enough time for them to turn things around. But they give a grade in progress, so it's pretty easy to generate a report card. The elementary teachers have to prepare them for that conference that comes about six or seven weeks into the year, correct, into the semester. And then they have to turn around, and so they prepare for that, and then they turn around and give a grade at the night weeks. So, the question is, are we kind of double-efforting that? And could, could conferences be later? Either could we do everybody later? Could we do conferences at different times so that the conference aligns with the, the nine weeks for them early on? And again, I think that is a spot-on issue for the calendar committee. If that's something that, that they could put on their survey, and if that's an issue for a lot of people, they could look at potential solutions to that.
I feel like a look, but I think, you know, we give a range, so when the calendar, when the typical spring conferences are, there's a range of six to seven weeks, eight to nine weeks. I think we give a range for them to give input back.
Right, I don't think that there was a page, should we split them up?
No, it's not a question, it's a range, and when is the most appropriate time to do this?
Well, that was the one that we brought up. The, I think the fall one is generally a little bit later, it's closer to the nine weeks time historically. And the, the reason I think we probably haven't split in the past is because we'd have to have bus drivers work both days instead of just one. We'd have to have food service work both days instead of just one. Again, is it insurmountable? No, but it would create a cost to do that. So, I think in the past, we probably haven't looked at that. And, and from a family standpoint, I'm not sure if families would like that idea where my kids aren't all out of school the same day for conferences. So, again, there's a, that's right in the wheelhouse for the calendar committee.
We could alternate in-service days too, though. We could be in-service still for the upper grades. Conferences for lower grades, I think there's ways to do that. But anyway, I think the board was pretty unanimous in saying that we haven't been getting those since the same day now.
Yeah, I'll check, we've only had a couple of them, but I thought one of them was in L, I'm pretty sure.
KH, well, I'll have to work with that.
Good.
Okay, so maybe we can all go see if that's the case. I don't know what the rest of the board feels about this. I would not want to make the decision right now. But I'm wondering if something can be done where we can each, different issues that have been brought up to us or questions that have been brought up regarding calendar type concerns or issues, if we could, as a board, introduce those in the NSO you may know, is we know what those, or something like that, so we know what those issues are before we come back and kind of talk about some of those things.
Yeah, if you've had anything that's come up with you, if you would share it with me, I would certainly like to know that. Because I don't think I've, I don't think I've heard anything from a board member, I think, that came up at that faculty meeting. But that's a little...
Okay, sound good for it? Great, thank you.
Thanks.
If we did year-round the school, I would have to move first. I can't imagine where anyone would assume, or would add days to the calendar without understanding that there would have to be additional compensation.
You don't actually have to add days to the calendar.
No, absolutely, you just could give more vacation. I mean, the street would be a challenge now.
That's right.
I appreciate people in the community talking about it, I mean, it's always good to talk about it.
Vacation time and people doing longer springs.
I don't want to get rumor-served.
Yeah, we don't want to talk about it, or that'll be the rumor.
Okay, so we're at the district facilities plan update.
Okay, so, John and I came back in January. We were a little late last year. Let's back up even further, though. When John first came here, we didn't have a roadmap, we didn't have a long-range facilities plan. We were kind of just flying by the seat of our pants. And John has put together a long-range facility plan, and he's got the committee going. So, we came and talked to you last January and gave you an update on the 2017-18 results. I shouldn't have given you your handouts, because none of you is paying attention to me. We're those yander bags. So, what we want to do tonight is we want to try to get back on track. Our goal is to be able to report to you every fall, every winter, kind of as to what we did last year, how we ended the year, and then how we're kind of looking and how we're progressing. Not only for next year, the next five years, but in our full long-range facilities plan, because ultimately, our goal is to make sure that we always have the funding that we need, at least a minimum for the next five years to handle the many things that we think are going to come our way. So, to start off, John's going to give you a quick update on kind of what we've got going on.
So, last fall, we had a outside contractor come in and give us a report on the condition of our roofs. And they went through every building and identified, got upon the roof and identified the condition and where we're at. And they identified priorities A, B, and C, with A being repairs that need to be done immediately, B like two to three years, and C, four to five years. So, we took all of them, bundled them up, and they said, we have the money, let's do it. So, we addressed every single building in the district, started, kind of got a late start, it was supposed to start in early spring, but it got started late, but we just finished up in October with all those repairs. That...
Even ones that were five years down the road?
Not, just the repairs. We're talking...
Just that first priority A, B, C, that 1.2 million dollars.
Yeah, they identified roof replacements on out five years, and five to, out to 15 years, I believe. But the stuff that needed to be done immediately is going to help us get by. So, we're concentrating on the building envelopes right now, all of the seals on the outside of the building, the windows, the roof, to keep the building tight and dry. And that, so that, that puts us in good shape. Now, keep in mind, if we have a foot of snow that sits on that roof all winter long, and drains are all clogged or plugged up from ice, and it starts melting, and there's a lot of water up there, it's going to find a way into the building. It's, it's going to happen, even with all the repairs that we did. But that's unforeseen stuff, it's just going to happen to us, that we just have to deal with when that comes. So, in the meantime, we look at, so that's it on the roof there, so that, we feel like we're in good shape on the roof right now. So, we looked into LED lighting.
Can I ask a quick question on the envelope, since you're there?
Yep.
We had at least one in that environmental study, there was at least one building, if not a couple, that they were so, such good envelopes that there was no...
Too tight.
Yeah, there were too tight.
So, we had that indoor quality because of that, because our HVAC equipment does not introduce any fresh air into the building. So, that, that's the cause of that, so.
Did we get that addressed?
We are addressing it. With every new piece of equipment that we add to our buildings, from here on out, we'll have that capability. So, that's what we did Gertrude Walker. We did that project there in 18, and that, that addressed that problem, yeah. So, every building from here on out will have the sensors in the school that will monitor that and adjust the airflow accordingly. Okay, so that same period that we did the Gertrude Walker, we did a sample LED lighting project. How do I say? Yeah, pilot program, thank you. And so, there's several companies out there that do that, and there's several methods that you can do. So, what we did, we just took the, the two-by-four troughs that we had, took the guts out of there, the bulbs and the ballast, and replaced those with LED bulbs and a driver. And so, that's, that's what we did, and we realized the savings, at least 30% energy savings. Gertrude Walker experienced more because we did the HVAC upgrade also. So, I think we're about 40% savings there. And that was a good deal. So, now there was another company that came to me, and I wanted to try them out. So, in the spring break of last year, we did two buildings, Jenny Wilson and Buffalo Jones. We retrofitted those, and they were similar, but they had the driver built into the tube. So, we just took out the tubes and the ballast and went back in with tubes. And so, that, again, is realizing the savings there for those two buildings. And those, those are going to vary because they had different bulbs in their buildings. Some, Buffalo Jones still had T12, and that's just a thicker bulb that they don't make anymore, they're very much energy hogged. So, that building was using more energy that way. But they're both, both of those projects are realizing the energy savings that we were anticipating. In the meantime, I found out that the, these lights, the custodians are supposed to be pulling these, dismantling these, pull down the lens, take the bulbs out, clean the bulbs, or replace the bulbs, clean the lenses, and put them back up, put them back together every summer. And I'm finding out that a lot of that's not getting done, because our custodians are comfortable getting up on the lift and getting to the high ceilings that we have in some of the buildings. So, this year, I started looking into just new, complete new fixtures. There are two-by-four light panels, LED panels, and they, they're very impressive. And so, that's the way I'm going to go for these high areas, because I can, we can clean them from the ground rather than getting up there in a lift to take them apart and clean them. But now I want to try it in a classroom, because sometimes it could just be so overwhelming, it's maybe too much light. So, if I need to do a classroom and see how that's going to do for the lighting levels in that classroom, to determine which way to go with that, because if they, if it's too much light, if we go fixture for fixture, if it's too much light, then I need to start removing some fixtures, and then we have to redo the, the configuration of the lighting. So, this, this will let us know when we get this done. And I hope to do that here real soon, within a couple of months.
I've got a question on your lighting, when you talked about then taking them down, the light bulbs every summer and cleaning those, is that a standard of the school, or is that standard of the light bulb, or I've never heard that?
It's just, it's just part of the complete cleaning of a building. You start at the ceiling and work with light.
Just something that we do?
Just something we do. That's something I, I did back in Lawrence, and I just kind of expected it when I got here, that, that I just assumed that it was being done that same way here. I, I know that in the classrooms, they, they are doing the light... Um, I, I know that in the classrooms, they, they are doing the lights. They are pulling the lenses down and cleaning the inside of the lens, getting all the buns out of there. Uh, but they're not doing the high areas, so this was a solution.
How long does a LED tube last?
They're five to 10 years. They, 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 I don't have enough experience with them to know for sure how long they're going to last.
And how long does a regular tube last?
They'll last two to three years, uh, just depending on how, how often we turn on.
So that LED tube might last four times as long? And you might not have to clean the other one because it's coming down in a couple of years anyhow because it's going to be needing to be replaced, but those LED tubes will last much longer.
Yeah, I think it was the, the tubes would still need to be cleaned each summer too. The, the lenses would have to be dropped and, and clean the lenses and the tubes and then replace it at that time. But, um, so these LED panels, they, they look just like a, pretty much like an outside light. Um, they're, they're, they're just so, so nice, um, and clear. But I think it made pretty too much, uh, light, so we have to monitor the levels, the lighting levels in the classroom to make sure. So that's a, that's what we're going to do with the LED lighting. So that's why I have that in 18, 19, and 20 that, that's pushed out a little bit now because of, of this uncertainty.
Well, I think it's just interesting the technology changes faster than, I mean, it's amazing. We know there are savings to be realized, but we want to make sure that we try to capture that savings with the best technology at the time. And so it, it definitely creates a little bit of an issue, which is kind of why I wanted him to talk about that because it goes into the next thing that I'm going to talk about. I know it's really hard to read. It's why I gave you your copies. Now you can all get down and read your papers. Um, and John, I'm just going to walk through this. You jump in whenever. So what I wanted to show you was kind of take you back to the, uh, presentation we did back last January. It's okay, here's where I said we were going to be. Here, how did we end up? So what I'm showing you here is everything that we said we were going to do, we, John, said he was going to do in 2018. Cause you know I'm not doing any of it. Um, and so I've organized it so that we've actually, if you look on that FAR column, the actual cost has been input there. We've done everything that, um, he anticipated except for these bottom five pieces. Um, two of them, let's see, the LED lights, which obviously we're going to wait because of what he just said. So I'm going to move those into 2020. Um, that'll show up later. Um, the window replacement at Florence Wilson, you actually, um, approved that today. So that's getting done. It just got done a little bit later than anticipated. Um.
Along with, uh, VO being done also this summer.
Oh, yep, sorry. And then, um, AP, there's an HVAC replacement that's going to be bid in December, so we're going to move that to 2019. And then those two bottom items there, um, they're just, one of them was one we just didn't get to yet. The regrade of the South Playground has to do with their, it actually, if I understand correctly, the project became a little bit bigger in scope than what you originally thought.
Their PTO wants to buy a swing set for wheelchairs that they have a platform that a wheelchair could roll out to. And right now the surface that they have out there won't, um, won't condone, it won't handle that. So I'm looking into a different type of a surface we put out there so that would, that money will be absorbed into a, now the project is going to cost a lot more money.
But for the most part, everything that was on his schedule, um, got done, just a few exceptions that are going to be moving.
Well, that's one, John. Do other schools have that swing?
No, no, and this is a, this is just one that, um, she's got more kids in this, in the building this year with, in a wheelchair. And, uh, the PTO has, um, offered to pay for this, so she, she wanted to buy it right now and then have us figure out how we're going to put it in. So when I, whenever I looked at it, there was like one place that it can actually go because of the size of it. And, um, when it rains, it floods out there and it holds water. And it just needs to be, I want to just, to try to wing it and go in and then move the dirt around and try to make it better. And I'm going to have to have it civil engineered to, uh, just so I, just so we know it's right. Cause I think they just kind of threw it together last time. But the sidewalks too high, but everything's too low and it just holds water.
I was thinking maybe Dr. Carlin can, I was thinking this, a couple of schools had those swings at one time. They, they end up taking them out because, uh, kids are getting injured by them.
And that's a, that's.
Recall that?
You can add a very good point that I've heard from other districts is that, um, districts that have bought this in have taken it out because they have, I've had old kids getting hurt on, on the weekends and.
And I don't want to say don't do it. I'm just, I guess my suggestion is you might check. Cause I thought Off the Brown had one at one time.
I'll check. I don't, I don't remember that, but it very well.
And I could be, I could be totally wrong. I thought there was a couple of schools that had them.
But I do know.
And that they took them out and a kid getting injured by them.
So unsupervised use?
Yes, weekend evenings, um.
That I don't know. No, I mean, you only have one or two teachers on playground, going on, so.
If I make a mistake, then no.
On the left-hand column, underestimated costs, some of those columns are blank. So does that make it, does that mean that they were not estimated? Cause what I'm looking at is the estimated cost versus the actual cost, which are relatively close together. But the estimated cost, not all the columns are filled out.
Right, so an item that doesn't have an estimated cost means it wasn't originally on our long-range plan at all. Um, so I left it as no cost just so I can always compare numbers from where our starting point is and where our ending point is. Cause he's always going to have things that come up that weren't on the plan. Uh, but we want to include them in here to show you what is, what's going on. Cause obviously the actual things that are getting done are more than, um, things that are on his plan. And part of that is because things come up and part of it's because we're still perfecting the practice of how do we do this plan, so. Does that make sense?
Oh, probably.
Okay. Any other questions on 2018?
That is TR, the building.
Building, probably transportation. All right, so then we'll look at 2019. And so, um, this would be projects that start in the school year that begins in 2019. So the 2019-20, 20, excuse me, 2019-20 school year are what these projects would be. So we're not quite halfway through the year yet, but quite a few things are in process. So there's a few things up at the top that have been done. I've kind of put all of these electrical lighting LED upgrades here, uh, because it's easy for me to see. Um, I look at the numbers up top and I'm like, John, what are you doing? You, we, we're supposed to be doing 2.4 million dollars worth of projects and you've only done 300. What the heck? Well, 1.1 million dollars is in this LED stuff. And we know we're going to move that out of 2019-20 because we think it's probably going to move into the 2020, 2021 year now. So that's my first thing where I, I think he can keep his job. Then I look at, um, then we brought some things in from 2018. On the last, um, slide when we looked at 2018, there was about $75,000 worth of projects that have kind of slipped into 2019. There were also things that, um, because we are not doing all of the LED lighting projects that we budgeted for, John's now going into some of the long-range items and pulling them forward. So there are some things that have come forward, um, from future years, um, that are also down here in the bottom. And I would anticipate that, that we're going to see more of those, um, as the year goes by because we will have this 1.1 million dollars that's going to kind of, uh, fall out. Um, one thing, and I kind of noted it on there, if they've already, he's got a plan for when certain things are going to be bid. Um, so when I look at that $300,000 that we've already spent, um, and you add up all of the other things that he's got to be bid dates on them, um, they're about 1.4 million dollars. So if you add that plus the 300, um, it will get us a lot closer to where we think we're going to be for the whole year. And that's all a lot of garbly gook for the last page, which is, that's all nice and pretty, but where are we now? What does all of these changes, what does that mean for going forward? So back in January of 2019, uh, we laid out kind of the five-year plan for the long-range facilities and broke out the first five years. The rest of it's down here in this bottom, so we had about 36.7 million dollars. Now, if we look at our revised estimate, um, I've still laid out the first or the next five years for you. Um, and we're at about 37.6 million dollars, which is an increase of almost a million dollars. Which again, we would expect some increases because there's just things that are coming on that we hadn't thought about as we're thinking through this process of when is that going to need to be replaced and it gets added to the list. So what's important to me though, as I look at these numbers, because I, I love to change the dates and then refresh my pivot table on when the years of when they're going to come up because I'm anxious to see what those numbers are going to be each year. What I would be afraid of is if we looked at some of these numbers and especially in the next five years, do we have a year where we're going to have $5 million worth of additional capital outlay improvements? And do we have the budget for that? Um, so if we keep in mind that, um, in a, in an average year, our, um, capital outlay fund generates about 4.5 million dollars. About 2 million of it's going to go to regular operating expenses for the year. Um, just regular maintenance, John's budget that he gets to do with what he wants to as far as regular maintenance for his buildings. That additional 2.5 is going to go towards these projects. Now, some years were a little higher than 2.5, but that's okay because we've got a little money in the bank already. And that's kind of why it's there for these ebbs and flows of things that are going to happen. But I don't see anything that scares me over the next five years at this point in time. Um, and again, just like last year, things are going to change. There'll be, um, I shouldn't say a fire, but there'll be something that happens, you know? The, 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 something that comes up that needs our attention right now that maybe wasn't on the list for another couple of years. But given these numbers and this scenario, I feel good that we're going to be able to handle that and we still be okay, that we can attack that project if we needed to and still have money to do the other things that we needed to do.
We need to hit the HVAC, the, uh, air conditioning and heating systems, uh, really hard over these five years. Um, and that's going to put us ahead of the schedule for roof replacements after that. That's going to be the big chunk of the money there is the roof replacements. But they don't have to all be done at, at one time. It's going to be spread out, so, um, it's a, it's a good plan for you to stick to it and, um, but it, it's really important to get this, uh, heating and air conditioning, um, system done. And there's a lot of them, the chillers and boilers at, uh, the five schools, um, you know, with the EFS systems on them. So that's our, that's our plan.
Can we do something similar with the HVAC systems, like you did with the roof by having them audited across the district?
We're going to.
I think you should ask.
Yes, um, I, I've tried to do this myself, um, to, uh, to do it the way you guys want to do it. And, um, it's, it's hard for me to do. So that's what I need to do is reach out to some professionals to help me with this. And they're going to look at, um, HVAC and the, uh, inside of the building, painting carpet. I don't have an eye. I could come in and, and I don't know if this carpet needs replaced, you know, really, just if it's functioning properly. Um, but the, uh, architects, um, and the, uh, engineers and, uh, the mechanical engineers and equipment engineers, they can look at the inside, the mechanical side of the building and, uh, architects can help me with the, the interior of the building. Paint, but get everything back on a paint schedule, perfect schedule. Um, and then just, uh, regular stuff we do on a daily basis.
You know, I, I really appreciated in that prior audit, just the quality of the air. I mean, and I don't, um, need kids and teachers to be able to concentrate and have plenty of oxygen and all of that, so. And that audit, is that part of that standard auditing? Air quality?
The, the, the rules have changed for, um, indoor quality, yes. The, the acoustics standards, American standards for heating and, and the cooling there. Uh, those have changed dramatically over the years to identify that. Because when everybody started adding air conditioner, it wasn't, they weren't thinking about that. They were just thinking about getting the building cool for, for, uh, when it's hot, you know, for the kids to sit. And they weren't, they weren't thinking about the introducing the fresh air. So the standards have changed to where it's just mandatory now that anything you get in that with is going to, to improve the indoor quality. Can I say?
Okay, Jay, can I just, well, I always have a hard time keeping up with your thought process.
Sorry.
So I think I, I understood your summary, which was you feel good about the next five years in terms of what we've laid out and how we're going to get it done. What you were saying was that we don't have room for an unforeseen, for example, $5 million improvement because we don't have any reserves. And the reason we don't have reserves is because we let a lot of this get behind related to past budgeting goals.
I would.
Is that kind of what you were saying or?
No, I would just, I would actually just agree with that. Um, if you, if you were to say we're going to have a $20 million issue, I would say, I don't know how we're going to do that. But if you came to me and said, KJ, we got a $5 million issue, I would say it's going to be tight, but we can make that happen. Um, partially because we do have summer reserves set aside. Um, but weathering, what level of, of weathering would we have to do? I mean, we might have to tighten our belts a little bit more, but I would hope something that's $5 million is going to be covered by insurance. Might get go to them for a check, but, um.
For instance, a chiller is going to cost $250,000 by itself. Um, if we had to, we could rebuild our current chiller and get us out five years, um, for $58,000, somewhere in there. So that's, that's a somewhat of a comparison if that helps out any. I mean, we could, we, we would rate, rate these things to, to, uh, identify that, to help with that.
I'll try to slow my thought process down.
All right. We've reached G. I hope the board discusses.
News is this week at the high school, so make sure you go see it if you get other chance. I know the teachers have been putting in late nights, so I appreciate what they do.
Um, I'd like to congratulate Jennifer, Mark, Dana, and Jenny Raki for, um, winning reelection or election last week. Congratulations. Although I understand it's not official until next week because the Boyd County campusers recessed until next week. But the unofficial votes are in anyway, so. Um, and I did have one question. I wanted to follow up on, um, something, Dr. Carlin, that we, well, that was a big topic um, earlier this year was with regard to the principals that Jenny Barker, Plamel, and, um, Georgia Matthews. Um, I know that I had said at one point that I didn't want to make a decision earlier in the year because I didn't want to need, do a knee-jerk reaction. But now we're in November and if we're going to be hiring different staff for those positions, it seems like that's something that we're going to be needing to look into. Um, and I know I'm not comfortable necessarily with, um, a full-time principal at those schools, but a full-time person there. I think that was one thing I had mentioned before about trying to figure out how we can get somebody there full-time, anonymous, but doing other duties as well. Have you had a chance to look at how we can do that? Where are we on that?
So we've had some conversations, um, about, uh, potentially assigning some central office responsibilities to, uh, a position where they could maybe be at Plamel or Jenny Barker or Georgia Matthews. And they're not really having to spend more time being principal, but they're taking care of things that we, we might otherwise be asking for other staff to be able to help with here. Um, but they could do them from, or, or do most of that work from the building, so they would be in the building and available. That probably looks like our most promising approach. Our plan at this point would probably be to take it through our resource allocation process as a, as an option. And, um, I think last time of the top nine priorities, three of them dealt with administration. So maybe this time that one would land in the, in the area that we'd be able to afford. Uh, but that I think probably looks like our most promising approach to address that. The, uh, the alternative to that would be if the board wanted to, um, grant resources to that type of a proposal outside the resource allocation process or make it known to the district site council when we get to that point in the spring that that would be a priority of the board. Those would be some ways to kind of approach it. But as far as the mechanism to really, um, look at, um, how could we accomplish that without just making those positions full-time principals? That probably looks like the most promising approach. And I think I shared data with you last year, just on the numbers in those buildings. Um, you know, it will be difficult to justify full-time principal positions. So this may be a way that we can address. full-time principal positions, so this may be a way that we can address the desire to have that person present, a, a person, the principal, present in those buildings more. But I think we would look at maybe some other job functions for them while they were there.
Is there a way to make that expense neutral, or?
Uh, no, probably, probably not.
I've asked plenty of questions, I don't think I even.
Ken?
I just, I, I think the city might have ABA swing in a couple of parks versus the school, but.
I'll check it then, too.
And it could have been, it could have been us, if I, I'm not going to say it wasn't, but.
And I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying, we need to look into it, because we don't want to spend all that money, and then a year from now, say, well, we shouldn't have done that, so. Safety of all kids are, are my concern. And then my question, on our next board meeting, it shows in our packet it's December 2nd, but don't we have one in a couple of weeks? No? No?
Good deal.
And one thing I thought we'd use to comment on, and it's just because we went to two faculty meetings, and it got brought up at both faculty meetings, is just a little bit about the, the next step of the reconfiguration, just so that way it's kind of out there.
Sure. So, so we're a little behind on that. We're still putting our committee together. We were hoping to have a report for you a little sooner, but the report will now, will, will come in the spring. But that group will have some of our facilities, kind of expert-type people, as well as some of the people who've been involved in the reconfiguration, the earlier discussion. And their charge, you know, basically, the board accepted the recommendation of the committee to look at K56A, so their charge will really be to look at what implications that moving to that model will have, and bring back to you some options. Those options could include, I mean, a fundamental question that will have to be looked at, will be two middle schools or three? If we put sixth graders in our middle schools, neither Kenneth Henderson, or, or possibly Horace Good, could handle that completely, if they were the only two middle schools. So probably a significant increase in size to KH, and maybe a slight increase in size, in size, Horace Good would allow that to happen. There'll be some issues that we have to look at, because we would be looking at middle schools of a thousand kids. Is that too big for a middle school? So, maybe, maybe not. But this group will spend some time looking into that. Another option would be to go to three middle schools. So, one logical option would be to take a building like Stones, excuse me, make it a third middle school, but again, it would need some significant renovations, probably some science classrooms. There would probably need to be a gymnasium added. So, significant building project to make that happen. In our elementaries, regardless of what changes happen at the middle schools, we have some schools that are two-track schools, two kindergartens, two firsts, two seconds, that to add two-fifths to that school might be a challenge. Jenny Wilson, for example. So, there may need to be, given space, current classroom spacing issues, so there, there may be an addition that might need to happen there. So, in any case, probably, and ultimately, a redefining, a redefinition of our boundaries would also be appropriate. So a school like Alta Brown, that might be capable of right now being a four-track school for grades K4, might only be able to be a three-track school for grades K through 5. And so, redefining the boundaries would, would be an economical way to address that. You know, we've looked at our enrollment trends. We still dropped some enrollment this year, maybe not quite as much as we thought, or anticipated we might, but depending on what our enrollment trends do, that certainly has an effect. There may be some other things that we could do, if there is any excess capacity in elementary schools, including, you know, things like, EcoDevo has talked to the board about addressing childcare in our community. If we had any excess capacity, they might be interested in utilizing some of that to offer childcare in a neighborhood. How cool would that be for kids to be able to go childcare right in a kindergarten? And so, again, that's maybe a, a little bit of, a little bit out there, but those are the kind of things that that group will, will explore and bring back some ideas to you. Along with that, because we're going to have our facilities people at the time, there's also some safety things. Many schools are adding storm shelters. You know, I, I knock on wood, when I came here, probably, my biggest fear was tornadoes. And so, when I came here, it seems like the tornado sirens went off three or four times a year. Actually, when I came here, to me, it seemed like they went off three or four times a week, but it was probably really three or four times a year. Now, it seems like they go off once every three or four years. But it's, we still do live in tornado alley, and, you know, just like John mentioned, things evolve over time. Our standards for our buildings, and for what we do for that kind of protection are different today than they were when most of our buildings were built. So, would it be an appropriate time to start adding storm shelters to some of our facilities? You know, some of our facilities have truly secure entrances, where, you know, we have little systems on the doors where you get buzzed in. But if you're at Alta Brown, when you get buzzed in, the first place you have to go is to the office. You don't have access to the rest of the building. If you're at Jenny Wilson, or Florence Wilson, when you get buzzed in, you can choose to walk down into the office, or you can choose to go right by the office and go somewhere else in the building. And there's, there's not that extra security of being able to stop people before they truly have entrance to the rest of the building. There's issues like that, that there are solutions to, but it would involve some construction, some remodeling of the buildings to make those things happen. So those things, we'll ask that group to, to take into account some of those things at the same time, and include that in some of the options that they bring to you. Also, some of our buildings are just, they're, they're getting dated. Some of our buildings were built in the 50s, and, you know, most of our buildings that were built in the 80s, the late 70s or the 80s, still are, are fairly, their design has kept them fairly contemporary. But some of our buildings maybe need some facelifted, the bathrooms might be dated, the, just the structure of the building, some of the things may need to be updated. And, and those things may be necessary to get another 20 or 30 years of life out of the building. So, that group will have a lot of those kind of things to wrestle with, and Heath and KJ are going to kind of co-chair that group, and, and we're, we're hoping to get that group moving here pretty fast, so we can have something hopefully before school's out, to come back to you with some, with some progress on that.
Sorry, but talking about bathrooms, are you going to take them to the boys' room of Plymouth?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just asking, do we always get that tour, or when we go down for our board faculty meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention really quickly, you know, just in our meeting tonight, we've talked about the District Site Council, Calendar Committee, Long Range Facilities Committee, now Reconfiguration Committee, so there's always a way to be involved, if you want to have your voice heard, or want to contribute.
Call my office, and we'll be happy if you're interested in serving, and we'll be happy to, to find a place that you'd be comfortable with and get you going.
Do you have anything to add?
Just quickly, also echo congratulations on the election, and let the board know, Janine's already hard at it. She's, you've seen her at board meetings prior to the election, but we are working on getting her orientation session scheduled for sometime in December, and, and great, great progress there. And then some sad news, well, first, it's obviously American Education Week, so a number of things pertaining to that, so just want to make sure that we publicly recognize the work of, of everybody in our school system that contributes to our, the success of our kids, our, our teachers, our administrators, our health services, our custodians, our nutrition people, our transportation, our, our grounds and maintenance folks, and it, it really takes everybody working together, and I apologize if I miss somebody. We have...
Leadership?
Our, our district leadership, absolutely. And, and it really does take everybody contributing to make that happen. Then lastly, the sad news, we reserve, received a note from Amber last week, that this will be her last school board meeting. She'll be moving out of town soon, and, but this will be her last meeting, and so we want to thank her for her hard work, and, and the coverage that she's provided for us in, in our local newspaper, and wish her the best of luck as she moves on to the next challenge. Thank you.
All right, I forgot to mention this last, but that's the theme.
Well, it was already at the very beginning, so.
I know, it was taken care of.
Yeah.
And, so the next board meeting will take place on Monday, December 2nd, 2019, at 6:00 PM, in the board meeting room at the Education School Center. We now can have that executive session. I think Jeanne wanted us to call her.
Jeanne may, may want you to try to connect with her. I think she thought maybe her travel might be done by now, so. When you get ready to, does somebody have her cell phone number? I can, I, well, once you start, I can try to connect her, and I'll get out of your way.
I think she might be calling for the motion.
Oh, to...
Do you have a...? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Get it off six here. Six?
It's okay, I have to take mine off now, it's my phone.
Jean?
Yeah?
Steve Carlin, we are just about to the point of meeting where there's going to be a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Well, before, I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to ask this beforehand, or to make it as part of the motion, but I was going to suggest inviting Janine to be an observer. And with our phone set up here, what I would suggest is maybe that we have the executive session here, and then have everyone else kicked out. But I didn't know if maybe we wanted to talk about that. I just thought it would be beneficial to, I don't know, for training purposes, if nothing else, and to understand what's going on for Janine to be part of this.
Laura brought this to me earlier, and I, my expression was that I'm not comfortable with that at this point. I feel like, because it is an employee evaluation, I don't want Janine coming in with the possibility to be influenced, with some unconscious biases. But I didn't want to make the final decision as the board president. I thought that was something that we could discuss and decide as a board. Janine, it's not that I don't want to welcome you, because there's a lot to learn, and the sooner you can do it, the better. But if it were any other issue besides an employee evaluation, then I would be more comfortable with that.
Hi, Madam President, I would suggest, as sharp an individual as Janine is, from what I have been of her, and been involved with her, I think it would be more straightforward if, if things are not official yet, just to keep it that way, and that we go ahead and just do an executive session with the board and, and the individual involved, and keep it straightforward that way. I think there'll be plenty of opportunity.
Yes.
To indoctrinate.
Yeah. Any other comments coming board? Do you want to go as well on that, or how do you want to?
I couldn't think of anything. I mean, I was just maybe looking for consensus first, and craft the notion whichever way, so.
Did Janine have any other sense? In some one way or the other?
I agree with what Mark said.
So, I agree with...
Okay. Okay. Madam President, can we update our executive session motions? I move we go into executive session for 30 minutes, not wrong, like, to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-employment, now exception under coma, beginning at 8:48, or do we need a break?
Why don't you do 8:50 if everyone's going to leave?
Okay. 8:50. And the open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at 9:20.
I would second that.
Great, thank you, Mark. All those, if they were raised your hand, all those opposed and signed. Jean?
Sorry, I should have done it before. Sorry, I completely forgot, thank you.